Hello, everybody. Hello?
Hello, hello, hello.
Good evening, welcome to the Prosper ISD Board Meeting. I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District Order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Mr. Bill Beavers, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
Absolutely. Dear Lord, we just thank you so much for this day, Lord, and this school year that you have brought us through. Father, thank you for all the wins and successes for the students this year. Lord, as we keep going full steam ahead into the summer here, we pray for wisdom right now. Just also a time of rest for our teachers and our leadership within the district, Lord. We pray that you would carry us into next year. Keep everyone safe this summer, Lord, bring the students back to us safely and eager to learn here in a couple of months. We pray all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Before we go right into that, before we do that, I would like to welcome Mr. Kelly Cavender to our board seat. So congratulations on your election victory. And we certainly miss Mary Lou Smith, so she's doing something more fun on a Monday night.
Sorry to the family for the next three years, but appreciate you sharing him with us to do the important work of the district, so thank you for that.
Amen, perfect, perfect. Okay, so now we have to have a special business where the board will elect officers for 2019-2020. We typically do that position by position. So I would like to nominate Michelle McBride to be our Secretary of the School Board.
I will second that.
Second by Mays. All in favor? Perfect, great. I would like to nominate Mays Davenport to be our Vice President of their School Board.
I'll second.
Second by Jana, all in favor? Great, yes, you can stack the deck.
And I would like to make a motion to elect Jim Bridges as President.
Thank you, Michelle. All in favor? I'm gonna abstain.
I'm assuming that there were six oh ones on all those.
Yes, yes, perfect. What harmony we have, that's wonderful.
All right, so we'll go ahead and get into the consent agenda. Got the minutes from the previous meeting.
I had that same thing on my packet today, the bad font descriptor object.
This is the latest demographical report, I'm not going to spend time on this other than to maybe show you where we are for this upcoming school year. That's the number, which is sixteen thousand seven hundred, looks like for next year. For next year, and then it just gets worse. From that point forward, or better, depending on your perspective. Thankfully, we have an amazing community that understands the challenges of the district and they've done everything they can possibly do as a community to put us in a position to build. So thankful for all of them. And then it gets into the construction stuff, everything's moving, this is Fur Elementary. Miss Zee out there, how's it looking?
Beautiful.
Beautiful, all right.
Good answer.
Good, that's a great answer. Stuber, we got Dr. Henson here, there she is, back row, y'all haven't had a chance to meet her yet.
Hello.
She's finally a Prosperite, so she's here ready to take on Stuber and I'm certain her description is the same, it's just a little less beautiful.
A little less far along.
At the particular moment, but come August, it'll be just as beautiful. Middle School Four, again slated to open in August of 2020. You know, probably get questions or getting more questions as we get closer to that and maybe Dr. Bradley can speak to it for a hot minute about roads. Are the roads gonna, is Fish Track gonna be improved before Middle School Four opens? Or what's the plan on that? Stuber, or Dr. Bradley, you have some great news regarding that, sir?
Nope.
It was going so well.
Yes, we do have a couple of town council members here tonight and so we have been in discussions with the town and there is a project that's fixing to go to bid to improve Fish Track Road from Till East to Stuber. And wanna make it a four-lane divided road there with the turn lanes that will help that. We've, that couple-mile stretch has actually been divided up into four sections and so there's a part that we're going to pay for right in front of the school and then there's a part that we're gonna pay for and the town's gonna reimburse us in the timeframe. And then there's the western part and the far eastern part that the town's gonna pay for. And so we've had different discussions with town staff about how to fund that, how to break that up, how to bid it. Just to remind you, you're carrying a $2.1 million allowance in this Middle School Four project related to the roads. And so it's either going to, POG is either gonna pick up that piece and use that allowance to build our portion of the road. There's a small chance that we may take that outside, bid it completely separate, treat it as a different project and use that allowance money for that. So the hope is to have it ready to go by August of 2020. I won't promise that yet, but that's the hope.
That's the plan.
Great.
Rock Hill is just, every time you drive by there, it looks a little more done.
Sure does.
Same way with the stadium. Stadium now has turf, can't tell by the picture.
In the end zone, or is that black in the end zone? Black.
And then Additorium is really done.
Got water in it, yeah, fabulous. When will that open? If it's, will it open in advance of the stadium?
I don't know what timeline, I don't know what timeline we hear marked.
August 1 is the date.
August 1.
Great.
And then we also have a student outcomes report, Mr. Hanky for CTE.
Perfect.
Good evening, I'm Brett Hanky, the Director of Career and Technical Education. I'm gonna talk about student outcomes in CTE, which is Career and Technical Education, not to be confused with the CTE we hear about with football injuries.
Oh, thank you for that.
If you look at the numbers here, this is by grade level, how many students are enrolled in CTE courses. All seventh and eighth graders are enrolled in a CTE course. You only see about half there because this is from snapshot data in October. And then we have about twenty-seven thirty-nine at the high school this year that were in CTE courses. Sequence taker is a federal term. It means that they are in two or more courses for three or more credits. These are our numbers by career clusters, there are sixteen career clusters, we offer fifteen of those. Our largest is biz, or Health Science with eight-hundred-sixteen, then we have six-eighty-five in Business, five-hundred-ninety-three in Law, so quite a few in that. These numbers are, could be duplicated numbers, meaning that there could be a student that's in two or three classes and their number's counted in here multiple times. National Technical Honor Society was new this year, we inducted sixty-three students. This is very similar to NHS, but it's for students that are involved in things like HOSA or FFA, things like that, that have that technical component. There are GPA requirements and all of those types of things, but it's really specific for CTE students. Another big thing we had this year is Kids Teaching Kids Twenty-One Day Challenge. With this, we have students in culinary that create these recipes that are based around vegetable or fruit, they're given a specific one. And then we have photography students take pictures of those things, graphic design students create things with it. This past year, our graphic design students were in second place for that, so they received a small monetary award for that. We also had about two-thousand-seventy-five elementary kids sign up for this program. Concoral Elementary, two years in a row, has been the one with the highest number and they got a monetary award this year as well. The good thing is, students are eating better from this, so that's the nice thing with it. Next year, we're gonna actually be competing against Wiley in this program. Certifications for this year, we had five-hundred-and-thirty certifications earned. You can see the various areas there. Some are a little bit easier than others, you know, like when you get the Microsoft, you're taking a test, so you can take it multiple times. You get to things like a vet assistant where you don't see as many students, that's because it requires five-hundred hours of interning with the vet to get that certification, so it's a little more complex to do. Our CNA has been one of our large ones, we had seventy-two this year, previous year forty. We're working with Collin College, so we're able to get more students certified in that program and more students going through that. Then I'm just gonna go briefly through some of our different programs. There are so many, there's no way to cover them all, but we have, you know, have five minutes, so let me go through those as quickly as I can. This is our ag program, we have students, very competitive, very successful in this, competing in different shows, like stock shows, leadership events, different things. We had one student here, Devon Washaun, who placed sixth at National FFA with her thing. We have a grooming program that's also part of our Vet Tech program where students can learn aspects of grooming. We have floral design and we have a plant sale that you see there below. Architecture and construction, this is our second year of this program and we have some new things like a laser cutter where students are able to cut out the different things and you can see that there and do 3D models of those floor plans. Area George won a $10,000 scholarship this year in a mentorship program for architecture. Another one of our programs, Arts AV Technology Communications. Eagle Nation News won an Emmy this year. Eagle Production Group, it's our film section, they, bottom-left picture there, that's in New York. They actually get actors, they go to this film festival, shoot and edit, and three of their films were aired at the AMC at Times Square this year. They were also nominated for Best Editing, so it's a pretty neat thing. We also have a radio station that streams online. They won a Marcom Gold Award this year with the show Smith and Adams, Sports Drive, and it's at 5:00 PM on Friday, so you can actually listen to it online. So they're getting real-world experience in these types of programs. Business and Management, we have a lot of kids interning and one story I was gonna tell you is about Mitchell Sharkey. He's been interning at an engineering firm. They've been so impressed with him that they've offered him a job and he's just now going to college, so he's gonna actually get to work for them while in college, which is really neat. Our Ready Set Teach Program, you see Ally McCurry there, she was a student in the Ready Set Teach Program. Now she's a teacher here and hosting the student, one of the interns. So it's really cool how that goes full circle. And we've hired several of those students that have gone through that program. Health Science is our largest. We partnered with Collin College this year to offer many more certifications because they have some facilities and things like that that we're able to use. So junior year, students are able to earn their CNA. Then senior year, they can do phlebotomy, which is a little bit tricky this year. It's hard to get people willing to let you take blood from them, from a high school kid, but that's part of that. EKG, Pharmacy Tech, and then EMT. Hospitality and Tourism, which is our Culinary Arts. We started a barbecue team this year, I'm real excited about that. So they're gonna be competing next year with that team you see there in the middle. And then they also do different things like the Senior Citizen Luncheon where they host that and create the food and serve and then they do teacher lunches and different things like that with that program as well. Law, Public Safety, they worked with the PISD Police Department this year on an actual, kind of a mock disaster scene. Learning how to set up a scene and what all to do, collect evidence and different things like that. Then Forensic Science, which is a really popular science course. They created a blood splatter room so they could measure where the blood goes with different things that happened and all that. And then they learn how to take evidence from that. And then we have students that are interning at the courthouse, Collin County Courthouse, and they're working with judges there, getting to see different cases of all sorts. I've been at one before with them there, that was just really intriguing. Some pretty high-profile things that go on there as well. And then we have our STEM, lots going on there. See the solar car, they're probably working on it tonight. They do that over the summer, they're gonna be at Texas Motor Speedway this year. Last year, they actually drove the thing from here to California. So now, it's not all at once, they stop and start and get the trailer and different things like that, but it's still pretty impressive, they build that and drive it. Our Robotics Team, they went to State and to Nation, or to Worlds, not even Nationals, and did really well there. And then you'll see over here a cardboard chair. So in our intro courses, students create a cardboard chair. This year, they created one for a specific student in kindergarten. So that student got to come over and sit in the chair and try it out and see how that worked. So it gave them, you know, a real person to tailor that for. And then this year, we had our first signing for robotics. So these students are going into that further, their career in that area. And then last, but certainly not least, is our Autotech Program. Students are earning certifications there, they're going and working. A lot of them are going to continuing their education with that. Several work at Park Place and different dealerships, and they're doing really well with that. So that's just kind of a highlight of the different things we have going on. There's so many things, it would be hard to tell you all of them.
Wonderful.
Great job.
Great job, Ms. Hanky, appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the end of the consent agenda, is that right? Okay, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Jana, all in favor?
Okay, this is the expedited waivers that we submit to TA every year. It coincides with the calendar that's approved, that you approve in early spring. Allows for certain staff development days and early release days and everything else. So I recommend that you approve.
Means a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Michelle, Mays, all in favor?
Okay, here we have the handbooks. It's always, always some joy. This is the stuff that you can see that are changed in yellow, or recommended change in yellow.
What did we think as we read that, everybody?
We're coming a long way.
We're coming away. Y'all have any questions about principals or anything in here, y'all wanna forge ahead with it?
Not many changes, but there are notable changes.
And discretionary decisions. So, Dr. Verbet, that's gonna be in your ballpark if we approve this. Obviously, you've recommended it, but quite a lot of room for discretion. This is our chance, we either go to uniforms or we go to this.
One extreme with it.
No going back, there's no going back.
Put the Jeannie back in the bomb.
Can't put her back.
That's sorta right, you're sorta, you're right about that.
Who all worked on the committee as far as making the recommendations for the changes that are highlighted? Especially with the grooming standards.
Rock Hill, Brett.
You did this?
Yeah, I was secondary and then we had Jennifer Martin-Johny from the middle schools. And then, I can't remember, there was a couple of rooms on there, Tiffany Johnson's on there as well.
So there were teachers on the committee? Were there?
No teachers, it's administrators only.
Administrators only?
The ones that enforce it.
There's really not a lot of wiggle room, because this is a model handbook that's provided to us by the Texas Association of School Boards and so they send that out to us and then we take their template with any updates that have come from the state, any legislative sessions, make those adaptations. On the dress code, that's really where we need the input from the assistant principals because they're really the ones dealing with that day-in and day-out on-disciplining dress code.
Any others? No, we've read it, we've looked at it, any other thoughts? Mays makes a motion to approve, or a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead. Your name could be on that one.
Comments, questions?
Okay.
All in favor? Okay, there you go. Financials? Mr. Craig?
The financial reports, these are reports from dated as of May 31st, it has June on there, but it's for the June report, but it's actually as of May 31st. The first graph you see is the investments by financial institutions. The text pool is strictly mostly general fund as well as interest and sinking fund. As you can see, the increase from seventy-one million to one-hundred-and-three million from last year. The loan star is strictly bond funds only. As you can see, the decrease from two-hundred-and-thirty down to one-seventy-seven, mainly for seven projects that are own, very active and spending very dispersments for purchases. As you can see, the Independent Bank is our depository, currently our depository contract with Independent Bank and they have all six of our funds. As you can see, the difference is minimal from last year. The Legacy and Farmers Bank and Trust are both investments for, only for our general fund and we use them because they are paying extra rate, the rates are higher than text pool, so we put the $20 million in those two institutions. As you can see, the total general fund has gone up from one-hundred-and-five million last year to one-hundred-and-twenty-five million this year, a nineteen percent increase. This slide just shows the investments by fund. As you can see, the general fund, again, up from twenty million. Debt service continues to grow from twenty-four million to almost thirty-two million. And you can see the decrease in the bond fund from last year, from two-hundred-and-thirty-one million to one-hundred-and-ninety-one million. This slide here is our revenue, showing our revenue for this year. Total for this year is just short of $115 million, which is a sixteen percent increase from this time last year. As you can see in this graph, the state and federal funding is falling short. It's just that we're not falling short from what our budget is, we're just falling short of collecting these funds. So hopefully by August and September, we'll have our budget and that budget is around twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars. So we're expecting $10 million over the next four months. And this shows you again the revenue where the, this year's revenue, local revenue represents eighty percent of the total revenue. And we have collected ninety-one percent of our total revenue. Our tax revenue is already over what we budgeted. We've received over $100 million in local revenue and our budget was $99 million. We have not received this information as of yesterday or this morning. We'll update this report on tax collections that we usually get around the third week of the month. Expenditures, as you can see, the total expenditures up there on the right has increased twenty-seven percent and that's basically, it's been the same twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent for the beginning of the year. It's a $20 million increase mainly in the payroll, as you can see in the first column, first two columns from last year. This next slide shows you the percentage based upon total expenses by category. As you can see, this year's payroll is eighty-seven percent of the total expenses compared to eighty-five. Again, two percent of that represents the difference in capital purchases. I've discussed that before. Last year, we spent almost two, over $2 million in capital purchases in our general fund. This year, we have spent less than three percent. This shows you the expenditures by functions, very similar. We were seventy-six percent to our budget. Last year was seventy-four, so we're inching up a little bit higher, still less than two percent. And there's no other category, these are by categories by functions and there's a few functions that we'll probably be seeing, some budget amendments at the end of the year like we normally do. Just real quickly, we'll service the, this is the food service. This is as of May 31st. Basically, this will change very little between the next two months, but we are seeing a net cash flow as of May 31st of $448,000, down, up from $390,000 this time last year. Debt service continues to strengthen their cash flow. Last year, our cash flow from this time was seventeen million, this year it's nineteen-point-two million. Athletic fund shows an increase as well. This shows you the total payments from our bond funds for all the capital purchases we've done. This is from the 2019. As you can see, we're basically one-hundred percent completed. As you can see, the first payment in the month of May represented $20 million. That's what we, total expenses since we received the bond 2019. These real quick graphs, we already looked at some of the construction site, but just gives you a middle school based upon the $54 million contract. We are eight percent remaining on that. Rock Hill, you can see we've spent thirty, up to thirty-six percent of the total contract with POG. This is the stadium, again, a balance of seven, less than seventeen percent. And if you'll see in the forehand, it's, we break it out by POG contract and all other costs involved. Your architects, your other construction services, along with your purchases in technology. And then Elementary Ten, Fur Elementary, you can see this, twenty percent balance as well as the Stuber is twenty-six percent based on that. And that's the financial report as of May 31st.
Any other question? Okay, thank you. Well, financial report requires a motion to approve. Thank you, Jana.
Second.
Second, thank you, Bill, all in favor? Very good.
This was just some House Bill summary information for your reading and this is sort of how it's tracking right now, playing out worst possible scenario as we've shown, which is about $8.7 million light. So we'll continue to work on that. Ms. Fulmer is doing everything she can to make sure we're having the most accurate information. This is, this will be our first time of opening three new schools in the same year, which if the state allows, will be our new norm in terms of funding provided. So we'll have to see how that is rolling forward in terms of what we can afford to open. The community has said build, we can build. The state is now, you know, trying to throw wrenches in it in terms of staffing because as you saw on the previous slide, that makes up about eighty-eight percent of our overall budget, so that's what it'll come down to, but. But if everything went horribly wrong, that's the, that's the number we're looking at on the, on the deficit that we'll have to deal with. To the board's credit, been budgeting every year to build a fund balance, just preparing for the state to do to us what they've done. As everybody does their happy dance of what money they're getting, we're actually realizing about, not about, exactly, a hundred and seventy-two dollars less per kid next year than we were before the law passed. This House Bill Three, so we're not receiving a windfall of money like some of the other districts did. One of the things, the Equity Center, which really doesn't do much for prosperity, but these are the things they're celebrating, just so you know from House Bill Three. Form, funding formulas changed to base calculation on current year values versus prior year values, adding three point six billion to the equalized funding system. Well, the three six billion dollars, three point six billion didn't just happen, it came from districts like Prosper. And then you get eliminated the high school allotment, rolling funds in the equalized formula system, eliminated staff allotment, money to the equalized formula system, eliminated GT allotment. Eliminated the four percent bonus and funding recapture districts, received for simply signing a letter of, for signing a letter of agreement, purchase attendance credits, which you approve every year as a chapter forty-one district, that goes away. Eliminated the two thousand and seventeen hardship grant, that's ASATAR, they're proud of that. And then changes recapture to, the term recapture to local revenue in excess of entitlement. That's the new term, AKA Robin Hood. So they, they've done everything they can to minimize in their mind that, they've just changed the verbiage on that. So everything others are celebrating, an equalization of wealth, when we're up here, it's, they've worked strategically to bring us down. So that's what we're working through on the budget, we'll deal with it, we've got amazing people and we'll, we'll get to the other end of it and we'll figure it out. But thankfully, you guys have, have adopted budgets each year that have allowed us to, to weather the storm, whatever that storm is, and we'll get on the other side of it. You'll see here, I mean, just the numbers. We have about forty positions we added in the course of this last year and then another hundred and fifty, if you will, positions that we've added over the summer for the opening. The big differential between this year and next year is a third campus that we're opening. Instead of two elementaries, we're opening two in a middle. Now, we're going to have a challenge next year, we'll have the need obviously to open a middle, a high, and a high school. And so
A middle.
Middle.
I mean, yeah, middle. Elementary, I'm sorry, thank you, elementary, middle, and a high, all three levels, high school will be a a hit, I mean, that's just going to be significant. But we knew that going in.
We did.
This, again, just other things that figure into the
Those Blue Hawks will make it work though.
I'll tell you.
Blue Hawks are going to make it work.
What we're doing on active care, health insurance, you can see the contributions there. We still contribute more than most districts on healthcare for employees. So again, that's just to start giving you a taste of everything as we move forward, as we update that information, we'll push it your way. But that's not an action item, but did want you to sort of get a glimpse of the stuff happening right now.
That was a good, that was a good summary, helpful summary in the packet.
Then we get to the consideration of approval is, again, using IMA funds to purchase materials for these, for these campuses, I recommend that you approve that. In the amount of seventy-eight thousand, four thirty-three, eighty-seven.
Questions about that?
That's for math.
It's just math?
Yeah, I heard it correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jana, do a second, thank you, Deborah, all in favor? Great.
Next thing up, this is the
Yeah, this score sheet summarizes, just to remind you, we, elementary number twelve, which goes in Mustang Lakes, we bid that last month. And completed that score sheet last week. According to Mr. Ben Pogue, someone other than him submitted the number and put about nine hundred and seventy thousand under the closest bid. We did receive ten bids on this elementary and then seven actually fulfilled the qualifications. So we did have good coverage on the bids and certainly Pogue had the lowest number substantially, but we did the, went through the evaluation as such. And, and today we are recommending Pogue Construction for elementary number twelve to begin here in a few minutes, maybe. We'll start right now.
Is that a normal number of respondents or is that high?
So it's been a little, and Mr. Tony could certainly give the history better than I, it's, it's, it's a little bit interesting because we have seen a lower number than that recently when we had the pre-bid meeting. We had, I think, sixteen general contractors show up. So there's, certainly seems to be some, some, some movement in the market where more people are taking the time to look our way. And I will tell you that the three bids that were closest to Pogue in this are quite aggressive when we look at the elementaries around here. So I, I, it's very clear that Crossland Construction, Jackson Construction, some of these made a run at this elementary like they have not done in the past. So I, this has probably been the most competitive we've seen in a while.
So the message is, Pogue better sharpen their pencil even more. Someone else is just looking for the opportunity to pounce into this place, I'd hate to give them the reason.
Okay, fabulous. Okay, we have a motion to consider the poss- and possible execution of the competitive sealed proposal, CSP contract with Pogue Construction for a construction of elementary number twelve.
Make a motion.
Bill, second, Jana, all right, all in favor? Okay, guys can get going.
This is sort of an annual thing too, I mean, as we add to the list, we can't, we can only hoard stuff so long. And so we need permission anytime to, to sell off or auction off items. We need your permission to do so. I recommend that you approve.
How, how are those, how, how much of that, I know we talked about before that what's not sold gets donated or dumped or
Well, and the company we go through, Dr. Bradley, they, they just sort of, it's all theirs, right? I mean, how are we doing this one?
So Renee Bates Auction is who we've used and Danny may can speak to it more specifically, but they really just hold the auction for us, we keep the stuff here. The auction is if you bid it, you come pick it up and you transport it and all that. If they don't, if no one bids on it, we hold it for a certain time and then we just dispose of it.
If it's, if it's
If it's, yeah.
Donatable.
Right, if it's donateable, we will, yes.
Yeah.
Certainly, there's just a lot, there, what we've gathered over the years is, and in this one, there's a decent amount of, there's some custodial equipment because we're now using, using a separate company to do the high school and middle school, so some of that we don't need anymore. And then just over time, you know, the thing about wood chairs is they last forever, but they look horrible. So we have a lot of Rucker, for instance, and Reynolds had a lot of wooden chairs that have seen better days, get some of that.
I was just curious, what percentage of it actually got auctioned away versus thrown away?
Yeah, I, we don't, we get a decent amount of bids on some of those stuff, but it's, it's, it's all over the place, it's random, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We're sad about these chairs over here.
You can make an offer.
Your own office chair, I think is in a store.
That's good.
Okay, we have two motions, all in favor?
So I just want to note this for the board, this was part of the two thousand and nineteen bond package, we, we had in the two thousand and nineteen bond package of one point five million dollars for redoing playgrounds. And so I just wanted to mention to you a couple of things about this, we're at the completion of this project, which if you approve this tonight, we'll start this in July. Would basically get all of our playgrounds to equitable across all the campuses. And so that, that's the goal. This means that the Cockrell Offsite Playground will get the Vitra Turf Port in Place surface, the Lack Farms Playground onsite would be, I do want you to note that the Folsom Offsite Playground will, we're completely redoing it to involve inclusive structures for kids in wheelchairs. So it's a little more expensive, but it's going to add something that we don't have currently. And that playground is one that we have an agreement with the town because it's offsite of our school, so it's open all the time. So kids all across the community will be able to use that playground at any time, and so that's going to be a, a cool add. And then Baker is actually getting both playgrounds redone as we did the evaluation on it, some of the slides and so forth. Where it was either we could repair the slide and pay a lot of money to do that, or we could just redo the structure. And since we're going ahead and doing the port in place surface, we figured it was just a better deal on economy of scale to just replace the equipment and put the port in place surface. And then last but not least, Rucker, you might know we have like a nine acre playground in front of Rucker. It takes like three loads of wood, wood fiber to get that covered, so it's getting a complete redo. And you're going to have a grassy area that's going to be out front, but then a large play structure, keeping some of the stuff that's there and then adding a bunch of new stuff. So it's desperately in need of updating, all this together comes to about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so well under the budget of what we had put in the bond. But like I say, if you approve this tonight, we will, our hope is to start this mid-July.
Does this include older, like for the fifth graders, does this include older like tetherball and that type of stuff again?
So generally not, this is just the play structures themselves, which the one on the onsite playground or right next to the cafeteria generally is designed for kinder first and second. And then the other playground for third, fourth, and fifth, but this, there, there are a couple of elements in this that speak to them a little better. But most of the time, the tetherball, the Gaga ball pit, all that kind of stuff, we had to keep something for PTOs to fund.
I'm telling you, they have something to do to keep them busy.
Very good. Okay, it's a motion needed to approve that expenditure?
I'll make a motion to approve all the surfaces.
Okay, Jana, very good.
I'll second.
Bill, very good, all in favor? Good, very good.
Oh yeah, this is a fund purchase. You think this isn't as expensive as it is, but it just is.
Yes, it's, it's quite expensive, but this would complete the admin bill, every available space that could be turned into an office in the admin building will be an office when this is done. We do not need forty-four new offices at this point, but we are going to fill about twelve or fifteen of these cubicles immediately. And then the thought was just go ahead and pay for this once, get it all, it's all taken care of. Pogue did a lot of work for us back in spring break to get all this done, you might have seen the business offices now complete. But we know as we, as I don't think we're getting an admin building anytime in the next couple of months, that we would add people over the next year or two and this, this will complete the space. So essentially, when, if you approve this, we're done, we would add all that could be added in the fourth hallway or the third hallway.
And to, whenever that new facility is built, I mean, there's going to be large spaces to where that's going to be cubicald up, so this
Could we move those over?
This can be used, yes.
Yeah, these are, these are nice cubicles.
They're ours.
Okay, that was going to be my question, so, that's good. All right, thank you, Mays, you got a second? Okay, Michelle, all in favor? Cubicles it is.
Reimburse, we do this, try to stay ahead of the curve and this is a resolution to official intent to reimburse any expenditure we have out of general fund. And it's just a timing thing, if, if we don't have bonds sold in a certain time period, we use general fund to get a head start on a project. And then we have eighteen months from that point to reimburse ourselves and this gives
We've done this before, right?
Yeah, done it at least a couple of times and this, we're asking for, to do this with a limit, I think of two hundred, up to two hundred million. If it, if it needs to be, we don't have that fund balance, so we're not going to get there. But that's a, a, a recommended percentage of the bond from our bond council, instead of going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, so.
What is the timetable for starting to issue the bonds that we have, does that have to wait for?
Doesn't have to, it's just about bonding capacity, so our next, the, the first sale of the next bond will be late spring, basically how we've been doing it. It would be nice if, if values happen to just go crazy to have a couple of sales a year, but right now, we're, we're a spring, late spring sale one time a year, right now.
So based on projections, we don't see that we're going to need this, this is just more of a protection?
Yes, hopefully we won't, but if we
Certainly wouldn't need the two hundred, no.
No, no, but we might, you know, we might, we might spend five million, you, you know, if this doesn't come in till early summer, that we're going to get a head start on a project or something like that. So the, this is just a big number, but yeah, it's a timing thing, like I said. We just don't want to, what we don't want to do is we don't want to spend something and not have this on the books and then we can't reimburse ourselves. So that's, that's really the purpose of this, it's a safeguard more than anything else, if we do use any local monies, then we're in a position to be able to pay ourselves back.
All right, it's been helpful in the past. Any motion to, all right, Deborah Smith, Deborah Smith's motion, second? Okay, Jana, all in favor? Pretty good. Okay, Craig's back up.
This item, just to let you know, we've already purchased land from three different landowners for middle school four.
Longest set of documents in the packet almost.
And this is the fourth, now, I'd just like to point out that it could have been, it would have been very nice for Corona Artesia to donate this land to the school. Because there's no way in the world they can build a house on it because it's a drainage easement, but that's not how business goes. And so we are going to need to purchase this easement to
How can we express our thanks to Corona? Yeah, Artesia.
Well, we're building a middle school in their backyard. So we may already have, but nonetheless. Nonetheless.
Dooley, that easement's in the amount of one forty-five?
Yes.
Wait, no, no, I'm wrong, one sixty-three, eight hundred.
One sixty-three, eight hundred, all right? Where do they come up with this number? Is this a negotiated number, is it just per square foot based on something out of the
Yeah, I mean, it is a negotiated amount that we get to. It's not, nothing standard about it.
It's a shame. Okay, we need a motion or any other discussion?
I'll make a motion for
Mays makes a motion to approve, second?
I'll second.
All right, Michelle, thank you, all in favor?
This is a periodic update from TASB, this is update one thirteen, again, I've got, I'm not going to, you've had all this in your packet.
Yep.
This is all legal recommendations by TASB, I recommend that you approve as
Is there anything, I mean, looked at anything that causes you Anybody else see anything? I didn't see anything. Okay.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jana, second? Deborah, all in favor? Big packet.
And this is a change to Board Policy CH Local, and we've had some conversations about this in the past. And this will allow us to move that authority from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, so
I think it's appropriate.
I recommend that you approve that if that's to your liking.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Michelle.
I'll second.
Bill, all in favor? Great.
And then we're there.
We're there, wow. Okay, we're heading into executive session, we have to have a motion for that, but once we do, we will come back if there's any business that results out of that executive session. You're free to stay around and wait for that, but I would, I wouldn't. That's just me, that's just me, do I have a motion to go into executive session? Okay, Bill and Deborah, all in favor? We're adjourned.